And that's Miss Snell. Dive in.
Hi. We are excited to share the data report with you. The entire CNI team has worked hard to create this. My goal is to keep it under 30 minutes. So, I will do my best. So, first of all, we have an A rating. I think it's important to recognize teachers and celebrate how hard they have been working. Our teachers, our campus leadership, our district leadership, they've all been working very hard to achieve this. We also have a distinction in post-secondary readiness, and we did meet the requirements for special education. I know that Dr. Rock has already reviewed the preliminary data with you. TAPER report is the official report that the state puts out with any corrections, changes. It's the final report. So here is the list of tested subjects. So, as we review the data, there are three areas that I would like you to pay careful and close attention to, and those are math, special ed, and writing. The first slide, if you will look at the TIL, that is your special education subpopulation. There are significant gaps between all students and special education students. That is approaching. So that is the bare minimum.
Which is like a 60, right?
It varies depending on grade and content. There is your meeting subpopulation. Again, looking at that TIL, we are seeing significant gaps with our special education. And then here is the overall by grade level, approaching, meeting, and mastering. So approaching means that they have a very basic ability, but the state still counts it towards our accountability. Meeting means that they are on grade level, and this is actually where we get the majority of our points for accountability, meeting and mastering. Mastering means they are very well-prepared for the next grade level. Here is your approaching for math by subpop. And again, looking at that TIL, those are our special education students. So really continuing to equip and empower both teachers and students so that they can be successful. They range from 20% to 80%. So there's a lot of discrepancies between grade levels with our special education students. There's your meeting. There's your mastering. And then here is overall approaching, meeting, and mastering. And for the sake of accountability, we really want our students being on grade level, at the meeting level, or at the mastering level.
So really, the red, the green are the two that we concern ourselves more than the approaches?
Approaching, they still have gaps in their content knowledge, and that's not where we want them. We want them to be meeting grade level. Here is your science. And that was approaching. Here is your meeting for science. And your mastering for science. And then approaching, meeting, and mastering.
And these numbers are percentages?
Yes. The percent at the approaching, meeting, and mastering level. So we have room to grow with our special education students.
So are you seeing that pretty much all the way across the board?
Yes.
That special ed has to, we need to do better than that?
Yes. And especially the discrepancies when you go from like one grade level, 20% approaching, to 80% approaching in the next grade level. That's, shows that we have room for growth.
And the test they take, is it the same, or are there quite a few adjustments on it?
There is a star and a star alt. Most of them take star. It really varies by the student and their qualifications. But we want all students to be successful regardless of labels. Here is social studies. Here are your EOCs. So English 1, English 2, Algebra 1, Biology, and US History. Another area that shows we have room to grow as a district is in writing. There is, writing is part of the English 1 and English 2 test. So as a district, we have room to improve. We know from previous tests, 4th and 7th grade writing, that across the board, students struggle with writing. So we need to prioritize that. So as writing instruction improves, we should see those numbers improve for English 1 and 2.
At meets, do they graduate? Or, sorry, not at meets, but at approaches, do they, can they graduate with that score?
There's your meeting.
Oh yeah. You're very good. I'm going to put this mini note graduating.
There's your mastering. And that number should really improve with quality writing instruction for your English 1 and English 2. There's your approaching, meeting, and mastering for your EOCs. Again, we really want to focus on meeting and mastering. The goal is for our students to meet grade level. Academic growth. This year, the growth measure is a little bit different for TAPER. It usually measures year over year. So a 3rd grade to a 4th grade, did that student improve? Did their score increase? Since we didn't have a test in 2020, there was no growth for 21. So what you're about to see compares the growth that they made in 22 to the growth that they made back in 2019. It is comparing the grade level growth to the grade level growth in 2019.
For the same group of kids? So from like 4th to 8th?
It would be, so say a student was in 3rd grade in 18, 19.
18, 19, yeah.
So they improved, they took the test in 18, they, in 3rd grade. Then 4th grade, they're 2019, did they grow? And then, how many years is that? What grade would they be in?
19, 20.
7th grade? Is that right?
Sure. But so they're going on that change from here to here, but it's the same student track from this elementary school to junior high grade is what they're looking at? Not, did the 4th graders do better from, as a whole? From 4th grade to 4th grade?
Well, it's measuring student growth. The average student growth for 4th grade. So what did 4th grader, how much did 4th graders grow back in 2019 to how much 4th graders grew in 20?
This time?
Yes.
Okay. I may not have been asking that.
No, that's okay. So there is your 4th grade progress measure. And while students may not be reaching that approaching benchmark, they can still get growth depending on what they scored. They might not have met the approaching standard, but we can still get growth points for them. 5th grade? So let me back up. You can see, looking at that TIL again, for your special education.
5th grades?
Yeah. So like 33%, 50%, or, sorry, 90%, 100%. It's kind of all over the place. 6th grade reading, 6th grade math.
In the 6th grade, where they skip a book, so you've got a different group of kids? Or they all tested the same, whether they skip a book or honors?
There's, not at 6th grade.
Okay. The 7th grade, they skip a book. I just remember it messed with some of these stats.
Yes. It's 7th and 8th grade math is what you're thinking of.
What the stats.
Mm-hmm. But that really wouldn't, that would have to be more approaching, meeting, and mastering than your progress. 7th grade reading. So it's really inconsistent for our special education students because this is the same group of students. They're growing more in reading than they are in math. 8th grade reading and math. And then here is the comparison of state, region, and district. This one's, state is blue, region is red, and district is green. So we are below region and state in most areas for growth, mainly math. So based on the data, we need to have a stronger focus on math. Here's your EOC. This measures progress from English 1 to English 2, and then 8th grade math to Algebra 1. We are actually above region and state. Even Loody Martin is higher for growth than region and state. Here's all grades, a comparison. And look at math compared to reading. It's lower, so we have room to grow there.
But we're still ahead of the state in reading?
Yes. That's all grades. So in this one, we are behind the state in math. Next up, we have our bilingual education. And just a reminder, our current program goes up to 2nd grade, so any of the data that you see is not reflective of the bilingual education program. Our current EBs. So this is comparing our emergent bilinguals to everybody. This is not comparing our emergent bilinguals to everybody else's emergent bilinguals.
Correct.
There are still gaps though, and it's more significant because we're performing better than region and state. It makes that gap even more significant. And that is approaching. Meeting is where we want to be. That is the goal. We want students on grade level without any gaps. Approaching. Meeting, mastering. Approaching, meeting, and mastering. And you see, there are gaps for our emergent bilingual in every content area. Here is social studies. And academic vocabulary is a second language for everybody, even our native speakers. When you're thinking about manifest destiny, Westward expansion, that is all challenging academic vocabulary. So really emphasizing language for all students, those strategies that are good for emergent bilinguals are good for everybody. There are district initiatives like TIL and Kagan that are helping with this. We actually just had our Kagan coach come in and coached teachers, and the feedback has been really good. Teachers were very thankful and appreciative of the troubleshooting inside the classroom. So here is your comparison of reading and math. 22 to 19. I'm sorry. So, reading, I'm sorry?
I was just going to say reading.
Mm-hmm. Reading is showing growth, but math is showing a decrease. So another area that has the data that shows we need, we have room to grow for math. Okay. Star participation. Attendance rate, dropout rate. So we have an increase in participation. Our attendance rate, we are still struggling, and this is a good comparison because this shows you pre-COVID versus post-COVID. We dropped from 98.8 to 94.7.
How's that compared to the rest of state? Sorry, I'm making this.
That's okay. I have the report here.
I'm apologizing to everybody else. Sorry, I'm making this locker. Doesn't have to be exact. Are we quite a bit better? About the same?
I want to say we're about the same, but I want to confirm that. Okay. For 21, the region was at 93.6, but the state was at 95. Next up, we have the longitudinal graduation rates. The 4-year, the 5-year, and the 6-year, and they take the best. So our best was the 4-year at 99.4%. 5-year was at 98.7. 6-year was 98.8. Then there's also a federal accountability that looks at this. So this is the 4-year federal graduation rate without exclusions, and it should, it's Next, it shows how our students are graduating, under which plans. Is it a recognized high school program, distinguished achievement program, foundations with endorsement, and some of them are being phased out?
So why is that one blank? We just don't use those?
I think those are the ones that are being phased out.
Yeah, that's not a choice anymore.
Here's your distinguished level of achievement. Here's your foundation. Well, actually, this is all of them. These slides just reflect which program that they are graduating under, which plan.
Were we missing some? Sorry. Continue.
That's okay.
It probably explains it without.
Okay. Here it is all together. Oops, I went too far.
Are we missing another group?
Here it is all together. By subpop. Next up, we have CCMR. Students only need to meet one area for CCMR. They don't have to meet every area. Here are your indicators. There are two, two ways. They can be college-ready or career-ready. There are changes coming, and high school and AEC staff have been notified of attending So here's your annual graduates by subpopulation, and there is a slight increase. Here's the comparison to region and state. So for the college-ready part of CCMR, this includes TSI, dual-credit, AP, associate's degree, and Onramps. And there's a drop between 20 and 21. TSI, they need to meet criteria for both math and reading. ELA is on par. Only about 50% are meeting the math requirement, and to get CCMR credits, they need to meet both math and reading. So again, this is another area that shows we need to prioritize math instruction. We have room to grow there as a district. They can complete nine hours in any subject, or three hours in reading or math, and there are discrepancies between district, region, and state. AP, and this is the percent of students.
Percent of total students, not students in AP that got credit for being in AP?
Percent of students participating in AP. Then the second part to CCMR is if they are not going to college, are they ready to start a career or begin the military? Military was on pause for a while, but it will be brought back in the future. So really, this is the industry-based certification. We have a slight increase. Here are graduates with a completed IEP workforce readiness, and there is improvement Sped graduates with an advanced degree plan, and this number can really fluctuate from year to year depending on how many students have that eligibility. This is the industry-based certification. Our students graduating with a certificate Level 1 or Level 2, and really thinking about how can we support students, and what does the partnership with the college look like There's still two versions of TSI, TSI 1, TSI 2. This is just showing you the comparison. Students who completed and received credit for a college prep course, annual graduates, reading, math, or both subjects. There is AP participation. And here's the results for AP by subpopulation. Here is English. Shows a slight decrease. And this, the, this slide shows, did they meet the criteria of a three or more on their AP test?
Of those that tested.
Right.
As many as.
Your math, a slight decrease. Your science, a decrease. Your social studies, a decrease. Okay. And then here are our ACT, the number tested. We did not have anybody take SAT. A quick reminder, CCMR is a year behind. So our 2022 accountability is based on the 21 graduating class. Our SAT, ACT. And for them to receive CCMR credit for ACT, they need a 19 in English, a 19 in math, The subpop information was not reported. Sometimes they mask it. Sometimes they mask it in certain situations to protect student privacy. In small groups of students, it would be easy to figure out who scored what if they published it. Here's your average ACT score. The highest score possible is a 36. Hopefully, as writing instruction improves across the district, that English language arts score will improve. Here is the percent of students that completed dual-credit, and it is by sub-pop. Here are our graduates that go to college. About 40% are attending college. So keeping in mind what is happening to the other 60%, are they prepared to start a career? Here's our camp, district and campus profile. It's our student-staff-program information. So here's the percent of students enrolled by grade level. Our ethnic distribution. Our economically disadvantage. The breakdown of our professional staff. The ethnic distribution of our teachers. Teachers by years of experience, and if you will notice, we are way above in the area of if they have 30 years or more, and we just want to thank those teachers that return every year. And here are the special programs. Bilingual, CTE, GT, and Special Ed. There is AP's financial report online, if you click that link. Violent and criminal incidents, we actually don't show anything. It's like murder, aggravated assault, felonies. Yeah. Student performance in post-secondary institutions. Ludi is listed first, and then high school is next. This shows the GPA for students in their first year of college, and it's super small, so I'm going to read it to you. Students that have less than a 2.0 GPA in college, there were 15 students, and this is at two-year or four-year public schools, public, uh, higher ed. 2.0 to 2.5 GPA, there were five students. 2.5 to 2.99, there were 13 students. 3.0 to 3.49, there were 15 students. And 3.5 to 4.0 or higher, 16 students. So it just tracks how our students, the ones that do go to college, how do they perform? And that is the end. So I hope I emphasized that we have room to grow in those three areas, math, Special Ed, and Writing.
Thank you very much. Superintendent's report. Is there somewhere else?
Yeah, I think first, we had some other recognitions that we needed to do. The Paragon High School students competed at the FCC LA contest, I think it was a regional contest, and did very well. We had 19 members that went. It's an article in here, so I won't try to pick them out and pull their names, but they did very well. You heard about our state results with our powerlifting already? They did very well. And with the boys' powerlifting, also did very well. We had two art students that advanced to state. Dakota Pearson and Sadie Cummins did very well, and they're headed to state, artists. And then Ms. Chisholm would like to recognize Ethan Garcia and Brody Cameron for reading their 150 AR points and being principal of the day. And then Coach Hab would like to recognize the board soccer team that did very well this year and made the playoffs. Just that on that. Resignations. The blow personnel have submitted a resignation effective the end of the '22-'23 school year. Ashley Wilson, principal at Kinder. Tammy Wall, music teacher at Wright. Ricky Ann Stewart, CTE teacher at Paragon High School. Rodney Thogmorton, IT director. Erica Rosales, Wright Elementary teacher. And Anahy Gutierrez, cheer sponsor. Okay, Ranger Stadium line. I'm gonna let Alan pick that one over, because he's been working with those people at the stadium.
Yeah, they're good. Close and lights up. Everything's wired back in. Electrician's supposed to be back tomorrow. We've got a couple of underground workout boxes laid out. I know they've got some cheap rooms in there that just haven't buried in. Get everything going to make sure their lighting's gonna come on. Still have the west pole to get down. Understood correctly, AICL's supposed to be their third thing to cross the line is going to the transformer over there and kill that sun crane to get in there and get it down. Once they get that pole down, they'll finish busting up the concrete around the bases, and they still have the one to bust down on the southwest corner pole. And one more cleanup after that. Training, I believe it's Friday morning.
Who's getting trained?
I guess him and me will be there for sure. If anyone else wants to show up.
Need to know.
That's good.
Going okay though, Alan?
Yeah. They had to do a little extra work from Christian Thodywood. When they bored the southwest pole, the wire goes, for some reason, they come from the main breaker box over around the southwest pole and then shot across the field to the northeast pole. And they hit it.
And they cut it?
Yeah. They're about three conduits that come right around in there, so in the end, ended up pulling wire, new wire to all four poles.
Bottom line, it's probably a better situation anyway.
It ended up being easier for him to just pull new wire.
So when do you think that we complete it?
I think, I think looking for it's wrapped up. Third part, very deep. They talk like they were gonna hang point everything Thursday evening, which ended by that diagram that was in there. All the literature before where all the lights are supposed to point, actually take cones out there and set them in the spots of the field, and then they get up there and actually adjust things to probably have those cones in the center. So they should be done, I think, pretty much Thursday evening, and technically it's supposed to train by Friday morning.
Good deal. That's pretty slow fast from what we thought.
Yeah. Ended up in a couple of weeks, but Electrician thought it'd be a week, but he was.
He fooled himself then.
I said during spring break.
Okay. Then can you tell us about the window film that was put on during spring break?
Yeah. Windows, from USA at least. Anyway, they come up over spring break to do Wright, Williams, High School, Junior High, and just the entrance of Ludi Martin. All that was pretty much completed, except there was the IT building in the high school that the installer did not have that info on their installation sheet, so that didn't get done. So I've been in conversation with them last two, three days, three emails over that, so they're, they're working on that, but it should, what I'm understanding, it should all be completed when they come back up in the summer.
But this is that film that slows down anything so the windows don't shatter?
It's basically a, helps slow down the break of the window. I've heard a couple of, just throwouts there about being bulletproof and stuff like that. Now, clarify that, it's not, it's not a bulletproof film. It's not something that's gonna completely stop a break. It is, it's a security film is what it is. And it's the 3M security film, which is supposed to be the best on market. The single-pane windows like we have, you know, it doesn't take but a tap, and you broke those and you crawl in. It's supposed to take that to a two to five-minute break time, is what it's like, which is supposed to help give law enforcement more time to get there.
And Brittany, was this a grant?
Yes, sir.
How much was it?
The full cost of this will be 90 to 100.
Paid with the federal grant.
Our grant to cover this was $200,000.
And then windows at Paragon Kinder, what's going on there?
I think they've been ordered. They did come up a couple of weeks ago and take one window out. They wanted to actually bring a frame up, take a set of windows out, put the frame in, and make sure they weren't gonna run into the problems before they ordered everything. So they did build a frame, brought it up, put it in. It has been trimmed, sealed in. They ordered the glass for that. Looks like everything's probably gonna go pretty smoothly on that, so I think all of it's been ordered here.
So they'll start that right at the beginning of summer?
Should be. I mean, everything gets here right, should be ready for some.
All right. Teacher recruitment. We've been recruiting. I haven't gone. We've sent teachers, we've sent principals, we've sent a lot of other people. I think we're about halfway through it, everywhere we're going. We still have to go to New Mexico State, Eden Park, New Mexico, Albuquerque, Los Angeles, Panhandle State, Wayland. I think they'll be still recruiting fairs that we're going to. And I'm only going to turn it over to a board member who went to a recruiting fair and just give us an update, short update, quick update, on, on what she saw recruiting.
So I went along with our staff members and administrators to Texas Tech and WT over three days. There's a social event before, the night before, to get you to mingle, get to know the students, and then a formal job fair the next day. And I really doubt that if we hadn't gone to the social at Texas Tech, any students would have stopped by our table. They just, they have a map of all of these job fairs laid out for these students, and they can look on there and know exactly where the table is to go teaching Dallas, in Houston, in Austin, wherever, and they just cruise right by. And that's hard to do with Coach Hab standing there.
He's grabbing, was he trying to grab?
We were like, no. It was difficult, but we had some students who made contacts with that came and visited. But there were twice as many schools recruiting as there were graduates. The, if you counted bodies, it meant like recruiting bodies there, there were probably four times as many adults as kids looking for a job. There were people from Denver recruiting at Texas Tech. There just aren't teachers out there. So I'm proud of our local certification. There's a lot of students that have graduated with degrees but did not get teaching degrees because they have to student teach and they don't make any money for six months. And so a lot of people are going to ALTCERT so they can support themselves while becoming teachers. So I learned a lot about that program, other administrators, what our administrators do to try to arm wrestle people into the Texas Panhandle. Hab's got a really good spiel about how close the mountains are. But it was really difficult. It was a lot more difficult than I thought it would be. So the smaller recruiting events where kids are from smaller towns and used to a smaller population might be more successful. Along to the Allo one, again, there were not many kids in there. So, and some of them were ones that hadn't even graduated yet. They were going a year ahead to just feel it out, so it looked like there were more than there weren't, and there were still, there's just not enough teachers out there.
And they're not getting the education programs.
The schools are shutting down their education programs. Their kids are just not doing it. And then, so if we do get someone that has a degree, we need to find a way to cultivate that. There were a lot of questions about what you do with new hires, new hire programs, not just mentoring programs, but more of a networking, getting them to meet each other, because if you're the only new kid in your hallway or campus and you never get tied in, we're gonna lose them. We gotta look at some maybe non-traditional ways once we even have them here, because we also can't compete with the $65,000 Fort Worth is offering starting salary, or more $20,000 less. And we've got a whole lot going on. It's a good place to live, but it's hard to sell that to 22-year-olds.
Especially if they're from the Dallas, Fort Worth.
Even if they're not. A lot of them are like, I kind of, you know.
I wanna go make more money.
Well, they just were looking for something different. Always look, they politely said.
So it's gonna be tough again, guys. I think we can do it, but I think the ALTCERT may be our only avenue at this deal.
Growing your own is probably more important than ever, so I think we all need to pat our teachers on back and appreciate them more. It's a hard career. Thank y'all that are here.
Thank you. Now, we're gonna review the AP and dual-credit indexing according to the policy EIC local, and I have Paige here to tell us kind of how things happen and a little bit about the policy. I think we have.
I made notes. Just about the AP program. I won't read everything, but you guys can. It started in '97, '97. Our list of the AP courses that we offer. All of our AP teachers minus two faculty members who were hired too late in the summer to attend training due to late resignations had to take, or had to take AP courses, or AP courses without the training. All of our teachers minus those two have been to subject area trainings provided by College Board and also additional AP seminar institutes for training. They also have to submit their AP course audit to College Board each year to be approved to teach the course, and all of our teachers have been approved by the College Board. Up until 2014, in order for PHS students to be recognized as honor graduate, students had to be on track to graduate on the distinguished program and earn a cumulative numerical grade point average of 90.00, and also complete four advanced placement courses, with two of those being required to be taken during senior year. For the 2014-2015 school year, the policy was revised to include dual-credit course options. This revised policy is still in place. Students have to complete the distinguished achievement program or accumulative numerical GPA of at least 90.00, which is calculated at the end of the fifth, six weeks grading period of their senior year. They have to have either completed three AP courses and four semesters of dual-credit coursework in math, science, social studies, or ELA, earning a grade average of 80 or greater in each of those four semesters, or completed four or more advanced placement courses. And then we have a tier grading system in local policy that weighs advanced placement courses with plus 10 points per semester, and grade P or honors with plus 5. During the 13-14 school year, a committee was formed under the direction of Principal Leslie Ott to discuss and consider revising the honor graduate policy to include the dual-credit courses as part of an option for. the dual credit courses as part of an option for students. The decision was made to allow the four semesters of dual credit courses to replace one year of an AP course. The committee recommended that dual credit course grades not be used in calculation of cumulative GPA nor used for eligibility purposes, since the grades in course work could not be monitored by a Perryton High School administrator. In addition, the committee did not want to be some dual credit course grades to be a deterrent for students choosing to take dual credit courses. The proposal, which is our current honor graduate policy, was sent to the superintendent school board for approval and placement of policy, and was presented to the eighth grade students, which would have been the class of two thousand eighteen. Dating back to two thousand, the lowest number of honor graduates was twelve. The highest number prior to two thousand eighteen was twenty-two. In the last five years, under the policy put into effect for the class of twenty eighteen and beyond, we have had twenty-eight honor graduates from the class of eighteen, thirty-seven from the class of nineteen, thirty-six from the class of twenty, thirty-three from the class of twenty-one, and thirty-three from the class of twenty-two. AP scores in relation to CCMR for twenty-one, twenty-two school year, the participation rate for the region was twelve point five, for Perryton High School was thirty-eight point three. Examines scoring out or above the criterion rate, which would be a three-year or higher region, is thirty-eight point three, PHS is twenty-one point eight. Possible rationale and defensive PHS examines scores, we have open enrollment. We follow the engaged, educated power, everyone, every day. If the student wants to try, we allow them to try and to test if they choose. We do not have restrictive entrance requirements based on grades or GPA. We encourage all students to test, but testing is in the first two weeks of May, especially seniors may not give their best effort. Strummer students have already received college credit from an ACT score, choose not to test, therefore most likely lowering our percentage. The majority of our students are high average students who take AP courses for their rigor instead of the AP score. Students choosing to apply at larger institutions want to be prepared for rigorous college curriculum. Students wanting to be accepted at more prestigious, highly competitive for admission schools know that college board AP designations on high school transcripts may help in the acceptance process. Many of our students might be considered overachievers, not national merits, and might find less commendable, but work in and out of the classroom as if they are. Back to the AP scores, two different college board presenters and trainers at different locations at different times commented to the trainees that the AP exams are more on the level of graduate level work than undergraduate work. We might have higher passing rates and scores on our AP exams if we didn't have our students spread so thinly. Our students are in athletics, drama, FCCLA, FFA, they're traveling this time of year. Hab could clarify, we've got kids in class maybe four days a week. If it's tournament season, maybe three days a week. If the kids aren't involved in all those activities, they may be working thirty to forty hours a week. We have a large number of students at work outside of the school day. You know, so the teachers wanted me to express that they, they could force the instruction that much more, but the kids just, they just think it's disrespectful to, you know, the night sessions when the kids can't be there. We, we know our kids are involved in lots of different areas, and we wanna respect, they push as hard as they can short of making them drop programs. On page three, I put in a comparison for CCMR between campus, district, region, and state back from two thousand eighteen to the twenty-one, twenty-two CCMR. You'll see in all but one year, we were ahead of the region and the state. In the twenty twenty-one school year, Perryton High School was sixty-six, our region was sixty-seven. Otherwise, we were, uh, in some places one point ahead, some in other places seven points ahead of region, and even more so compared to the state. A student who chooses to take AP and dual credit courses should be able to fit in all of their desired courses into the regular school day. We allow students to double up, even triple up on dual credit courses in one class period in order to accommodate any additional academic or elective extracurricular courses they choose to take. We have students who will choose to take both AP and dual credit courses in the same subject area in order to get the rigor of the AP curriculum and earn their credit for the dual credit course, in case they don't need required AP passing score for their intended university. In closing, we believe that all Perryton High School students have value and that each student deserves the opportunity to take any regular dual credit AP elective or extracurricular course for their choosing, of their choosing. If they choose to tackle the most rigorous courses, we want them to have that opportunity. Not worse if they are on a career track, we want them to have all the opportunities associated with that track. Each student deserves to have as many opportunities and options as possible. We take seriously our responsibility to provide and support students in each of their chosen paths and to keep open and necessary avenues for them to achieve their dreams. Do you have any questions about?
If you could, can you go back to the weighting system?
Yes.
So AP is weighted higher than dual credit?
Dual credit is excluded in the GPA.
So it's not?
I mean, that's what the committee determined back when the policy was updated.
Do you still like that idea?
You know, I think if, I, I, you know, Tori and I visited earlier, probably it's time to reevaluate and look. It doesn't matter to me, I just wanna do what's best for the kids.
You bet.
I don't, you know, dual credit was ranking of so new whenever we first changed that policy, and I think we were so protective of our kids, we didn't want their GPAs to lower, you know, they hadn't been exposed to college classes. You know, I don't, I don't know, I just think that would be something that a committee would need to discuss. I think there's probably gonna be some good discussion if that is something that you all want, if that policy needs to be revisited.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good time to look at it.
Yeah, I think if you feel like it does, then I'm all for having a committee do that.
I think it should, because if you think about a dual credit course, you know, they're, they're doing college work along with it, that, you know, if, if a kiddo is, is very successful in there, that, that should be reflected. It's, it's certainly something that I would be in favor of, and I think consensus of the board as well, that's just something that, that as a school we should look at and see what we, what we need to do going forward.
Sure. Mrs. Little or Mrs. Jean?
Yeah, so back a hundred years ago, when it was us, it was a high school teacher teaching dual credit. That's how we?
Sometimes it was.
Yeah, we only had two.
Yeah, there weren't very many.
We had American history and college algebra.
College algebra, okay, that's why I'm like, I was trying, going, but that was a Perryton teacher, so he knew what.
Well, Mr. Herbert was qualified to teach.
Yes.
Coach Copeland was a history.
Coach Copeland was a history.
And I don't know if he actually taught, or he taught the curriculum from Perryton, so that was two months ago, if you remember.
Been a while since I, I was trying to remember how that was handled on our GPAs, but it was not off campus.
Right.
And now with pathways and the way out, this is pushed, we do probably.
Right.
It's been twenty years. We've probably even updated, not since y'all updated it, but things are changing.
Right.
And that's in the kids. Pathways is showing positive impacts on kids. So we wanna keep encouraging that dual credit for those.
I know some schools that weight their dual credit teaching on top of their AP. I think that's gonna be detrimental to our students. Because we're talking a totally different population for the most part. So I don't want, I just, and I don't, I think that's too much for our students. They don't have time to do AP curriculum and dual credit in one, in one class. So I think there should be lots of moving pieces that probably need to be discussed. I don't think it'll be solved, probably just one year.
No, I, I, I think we need to look at this, because I, boy, I'm looking at your data here, and I, and I really agree with you. Thirteen fourteen, Perryton was a lot different than it is today. And just, we looked at, we just saw the data on our eco disc, and, I mean, we're sixty-something, you know. Economically disadvantaged. So some of those parents are needing those kids, because it's cheaper to get an associate's degree and be at home than take off and go to college, and now you're paying for two more. And the other reason I have here is, I, I know AP, I've, I've been around AP for a long time. It, it will help you get into a more prestigious college, but I'm wondering, how many of our kids are going to prestigious colleges? Harvard, Princeton?
Yeah, but we can't knock off.
I know, but I'm, I'm trying, I can't take care of a few when I have a lot, is what I'm basically getting at. Because we're saying fifty percent of our people don't even go to college. And so now we gotta look at the CCMR, and we're hitting that.
Well, Elsa, I don't know if you guys noticed, but that was students going to college in Texas. We have.
So if they're going to Oklahoma State, or OU, or something like that, okay. I just saw the fifty percent, I went, oh, that kinda steens.
Be a special category for Kansas State.
Yeah.
You're special.
It's special all right here.
But if, if we can put a committee together, I think Dr. Rock needs to be on it, I need to be on it, probably some teachers need to be on it, and really look at where we're at in Perryton today and make it fit our kids. Because there are some, uh, local EIC and how they have written theirs with the dual credit, with the ONRams, with all those being weighted the same, and giving the kids a choice, and the parents a choice of what direction I wanna go, rather than, kids aren't doing it now, because they want the higher indexing for the AP. So they don't go that route, because they wanna be an honor student, or whatever the deal is.
I would disagree.
I, but I talked to kids two years ago, seniors, and I'm saying, why didn't you take more dual credit? And they said, 'cause it kills our ranking. And we wanna be in the top ten percent of our class.
You need your ten points.
And if I can get those index classes, I'm gonna go that direction, rather than dual credit.
Is it too tight of a timeframe if we were to look at being able to get the group together and have something back by our April meeting? Or would end of May be more appropriate?
Well, are you gonna get community members involved in that committee as well, or just teachers?
I think that's a good idea, students and, and parents. Because they're the ones that are paying the bills, hate to say that, they're the ones that determine, okay, what's going, and, and I have a little issue with, with the AP, and, and I agree, they're probably tougher class and everything else, but when you don't score well on it, and we haven't traditionally scored well, and we're paying for those tests, and the kids don't even have skin in the game, then I really think we're just throwing our money out the door. And I think the last, what, three years, twenty-something, twenty-seven thousand is what we pay for AP tests.
Really?
Wow.
So I'm going, if there's no skin in the game, and then the other one is, they spend a whole semester in a class and they're not getting anything from it. If, if you get a three-year higher, it will go on to your college, for the college with you. If you don't score anything at all.
You got your high school credit.
So those are my issues with it. I'm just, I'm just telling you, those are my issues with it, and I think we need to revisit it, because we need to do what's best for a majority of our kids in this.
Well, I think you're right, though, Wes, I think the sooner the better.
I think, you know, and, and if end of April is, is too soon, end of May, I mean, for
There's nothing going on in May.
Interested, apart, I, I, there's never gonna be a month.
No, there's never a good time.
We've got plenty of time. But, you know, any change in this program that is gonna be brought back to the current eighth graders.
Right.
You know, as we move through, we've got a fairly small window here before all of a sudden we miss, and then it's current seventh graders, before they come up. So, I mean, if we could, if we could send it back by, by the May, in the May meeting, we can all visit about this again.
I think Paige and I both will, together.
Yeah, I think if you guys can say, yeah, could put something together.
This AP program has been good for a lot of kids for a long time.
For a long time.
Things are, are changing and shifting with the state and all that. I mean, I had several classes I didn't have to take in college, because I passed my AP exams. And depending on your major, your business major, they're like, oh, you sort of passed the science test, you don't have to take any science, it's fine. So it allowed me to, to do some other things with those credit hours they still required. So I am grateful to the teachers I had in the program, but there are things that, an update's always good, but I wanted to tell them I did have fabulous education.
Thank you, Paige.
Thank you very much. Move on to campus reports here. First, in my book, Lee Peyton Martin, Celebrating Educations Center, Ms. Jackson.
Good evening.
Yay, that's all I had to say today.
Short and sweet.
Your attendance is awesome.
Thank you.
For an alternative campus, that's really good for an alternative.
And we had another graduate last week, so thank you.
Great, thanks. Thank you. Perryton High School. There's y'all. Oh, it's little.
Things at the high school are going really well. One thing I wanted to add, this week on Thursday, Frank Fields College, our willing department is hosting a build-off for the region, so we're excited about that.
I saw that. Can the board put together a team?
I think it'd be great if you did.
Don't you have to, love to see you. Do you have to be a student?
No, I don't know. I'm assuming it's first local schools, but they did talk about having teams on career for us, so.
So it's like, wondering if our employee should be a coach or a student. You lay, lay a bead, I'm gonna use the terminology. Cool.
Thank you very much.
I hope they have a good turnout. Oh, and the Why Teach conference, how'd that go? Sorry, Tori. Sorry. The Why Teach thing, since I'm on that, like, can't find students?
I wouldn't have loved to have gone. I heard a weird thing, so we have several students who went, and I've heard good things about it.
And that they're like, going, hey, let's go teach? Yeah, that's part of that, improving the outlook on teaching. Thanks.
What's going on at the junior high? Ms. Wheeler?
We had a really great student council tryouts and cheerleading tryouts right before spring break. It went, it was very successful. The student council students always surprise me with their speeches, and they do such a great job of talking to their peers and telling why we should vote for them, so that went very well, and attendance is super exciting. I wanna say thank you to our sixth grade students and parents. They are at ninety-seven percent, so for the year, that's a great spot for the speech. So thank you to those parents for making sure that their students make it to school and the kiddos for showing up, and everything else is going well. We're finishing up in our assessments and looking forward to reviewing and getting ready to the conference.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's go to Williams. Mr. Katz.
It's all good at Williams.
Short and sweet.
Short and sweet. But what I did write in my comments on my report, we need to stick with that. We can't cut anymore in elementary. We, we can't cut any more pre-K, Q-5. We, we've cut and cut and cut. We need to keep, start building our teams back. Everything else, everything's great.
Everything else.
It's all great at Wright. Jody's not here.
Yeah, we go to kids event.
I will go right past that basin.
Okay.
Let's go to Kinder.
I don't have anything to add, other than attendance is also looking better the six weeks, too. So we're about three percent higher compared to last year for the six weeks, so hopefully that'll hold out through the rest of the year.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Directors' reports. Let's start with Ms. Walker.
I don't have anything to add. I do know that Ivan Kane, and we figured out our percentage and stuff, and that helped, I think, with the grant to get the computer stuff hopefully going along. He was, he was working on that, and I was helping him with that, so. I think people need to realize that economic disability, disability, economic disadvantage there helps a lot of different areas. It doesn't just help us, it helps in a lot of different areas.
A lot of calculations come off of that percentage.
Yes, a lot. And we're working on that. I usually have, you know, those donations, and we're picking them, picking through them pretty quick, but it's just, gonna have to have some principal input pretty soon on those, because they are, I mean, we're just have, we don't have numbers, we don't have, we're, we're very concerned with the fact of when we try to get a hold of them, what do teachers do when they have to get a hold of them? What do principals do when they have to get a hold of them? Because, I mean, you can try all kind of hours of the day, and you won't get anybody. So it's, you know, it's important to have some kind of a connection that we can get through and we price, so. But anyway, but we're working on that. Other than that, we're just going along. I did get some prices back on one of the supply things that we were looking at, and COMBOS were just what I thought, they're about twice what we anticipated, but there is a smaller one, so we're just kinda looking around and still going out on stuff. But some of them were real close, and I thought, if they're within five, six hundred dollars and we get something brand new, I think we're gonna have to really debate on that and, and get what we need, because that, that grant's not gonna happen all the time, I can tell you, because if it happens the first time in twenty, well, third, well, we've been here forever, twenty-seven years, then, and that's the first one I've seen, it's not gonna come around, just, and when it does come around next year, I'm asking for more.
Four million dollars. Four million dollars.
That's definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kemp? Thank you very much. Mr. Kemp, anything to add?
I think we've covered most of what I've been working on the last week.
You failed your positions.
You know, one of them, ability, maintenance position, both balance positions, one less than we.
Oh, nuts. Made it into the report and didn't last longer than that.
Tough loss.
Tough loss.
Been there, done that.
Making work in the cold.
Okay.
The wind.
Wind. That's nasty.
Let's talk about young'uns at the Ranger Center.
Is she after?
She was here.
She left.
I saw Desiree a minute ago.
I think she left.
She left.
Family take care.
Full report, call with questions. Communications and safety.
The only thing I have on communications is if you need any information on the bond, we have a lot of it up on the website. So just go to the homepage and there's a tab at the top that says 2023 Bond Information. And Thursday, we have a community meeting at Wright Cafeteria. It starts at 6:00. So we're going to do a presentation on the bond again, answer questions that we have, and there's going to be a translator available. So everybody's welcome. Come learn, answer or ask questions and learn about the children's bond.
How'd your video go last Wednesday?
The video went good. We're going to use the video, but we're going to do a voiceover on it. So we're going to have an English one and Spanish one available. We're getting that worked on.
Good.
So they can just go on there and see our whole PowerPoint presentation?
I just knew you were at the back and I'm talking to you. I just didn't know how it turned out.
Safety, we had a door audit. Bridge 16 came, they did Kinder High. Everything's good. No open exterior, exterior doors. At Kinder, there was one open on the north side of the base of the playground. But we have gotten it fixed. There was a work order put in. I think it's in the book. There was just kind of a ginning on the door, but it's fixed and works correctly now. So no worries. You shouldn't have any.
That's good. That's a good building they picked.
And by, by law, when there is an open door, we need to report it in public.
So we had to talk about it. It's all important.
Oh, this is the criminology back. Get your. Trying to think, why is Alex DeGobdel Carmen giving a report here? That's the guy that you'll talk to with criminology.
Okay.
Curriculum and instruction. We've got, plug. Are you taking care of Dr. Rocks?
Yes.
I just have DEI, I think, and the TEAC certification. With the voting, do you want me to talk about it now?
Yeah, go ahead and do it now. And then when they get to it, they just vote on it.
So DEI set, DEIC gets to approve amendments for your consideration. They include teacher certification, allowing flexibility with hiring teachers that are not certified. There's still checks and balances where the principal recommends a teacher to the superintendent. The superintendent recommends it to the board and the board retains final.
It's on page 314.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Retains final authority. It just provides more flexibility as needed.
314.
And then we also adjusted the wording on the calendar, which will also provide more flexibility.
That's on 311. Okay, were you doing the TEAC stuff?
Yes. You also have a TEAC certification form. If you ratify it, we put money, so that's a good thing. You will see the extensive list of resources that we use to teach. Whether it's a primary or a supplementary resource. It is a living document, so changes are needed. We need to make changes. We already have it, so.
So the one that's highlighted yellow would be like an edition or an essay. It's on mathematics for 9 through 12. I just was curious what it happened.
What page you want it?
Uh, 299.
299 through 308.
Well, 299 had the highlighted supplemental publisher product used and I was just curious why it was highlighted compared to everything else. I love the names in some of these. Writing without tears, everything. Handwriting without, handwriting without tears.
I think the highlights are new materials for next year.
Okay.
I would basically confirm with Krista and Dr. Rock.
There weren't many. There was just a lot of them, so. Well, sorry, there was some of the intention.
Science also. I think they're just doing some research on this to see if we actually do want to use them for next year.
Okay.
So once you ratify it, Krista goes to the online portal and puts everything in and it helps with our EMAP funding.
Perfect. No money.
EMAP's important.
And then we get to learn what a vocabulary is.
Yes. You will love it. Krista did share with me that she attended a training and she found out that it's not necessarily based on our student number, the EMAP funding. It's based on the resources that we actually use. So everything that we use, we try to make sure, think of every single thing, every single reason that we use for that.
Makes sense.
You have the most economic advantage.
Yes.
With it. Thank you.
Okay, so we vote later.
Yeah, we'll vote later.
We get it next time. Next on the list, CFO's report.
Uh, 174, page 174, Snarks' report, the dispersments, nothing unusual. We will see larger payments for CDs. That's about it. Um, on page 218, there's a larger payment out of the grant. It was our last payment for the welding building, meaning that $125,000 we promised. So we're all paid on that.
On the building?
Do what I'm.
On that building?
Yes, sir.
Of what we donated?
At what, yes. Our portion, we agreed.
Our portion, yeah.
Yes, sir. Uh, 232 starts the cash position and book balances. You'll see.
232.
Our CDs were completely exceeding what I budgeted, which is a good thing. Helps us out in my budget amendment. I'll ask y'all for a little bit later.
I'm starting to say that now.
This is all great.
No money.
Um, on 247, you'll see where we're about $5 million ahead in revenues compared to expenses. At this point, I mean, that's kind of got, got to float us through the rest of the year. We'll get about $2 million more from the state. I know it's not reflected right there. We've had quite a bit come in since the end of February. I reviewed our T2 template after the state adjusted our ADA to kind of catch up with where we're at right now. And we're really, which I'll, I guess I could just say it now, we're at about 1978, I believe. And I, or I'm sorry, 1878. I budgeted 1900. But with our special populations bringing in more income from the state, we're within about 100,000 of what I budgeted coming in from the state.
With a budget of that size, that's awesome.
Yes.
Very accurate. Yes.
Yeah, just $100,000. Uh, this month, we'll put another $50,000 into our capital fund to help later replace the football turf, anticipating that need later. And then the last thing besides enrollment, which I kind of hit, I mean, stayed kind of steady this whole school year, is bringing back up the insurance deductible if we were to have an occurrence for winter hail. It's a minimum of $500,000 per building, so each building will be separate. It's 1.1%. Some of the buildings, they're valuing at like $20,000.
That's 500 per building, not per event?
Minimum, no, sir, per building.
Wow. Take an insurance man dragging around the room.
If we want to purchase one of these plans in our policy, we could, but that's going to be close to another 100,000.
And these deductibles out here that don't include the percentage, if just a flat 250 or flat 100, that's per structure as well? Not per event?
I believe it's per structure.
Okay. If it was per event, it's a better deal for sure. But if that's per structure.
Yeah. And our schools are conveniently located within, within like a one mile square.
So if it gets, it's against us all.
Can we build a roof between Wright and the admin building and make it one big structure, Wright-Williams?
Yeah, ta-da!
That's creative.
That's a good deal.
What constitutes one structure? I'm only moderately unserious about that.
Just has a person life name.
Cheaper probably than $100,000 to put in a, plus freeway. So we talked about this a little bit. That's like really scaring me that we would just empty our fund balance if something like this happened. But Brittany said we could designate inside the fund balance, like a portion of our excess every year to have kind of a.
For self-insurance.
For self-insurance.
Self-insure.
Because.
But the problem is, the problem is, is spring's coming right now and that's when the hailstorm's going.
It is, but we haven't done anything to this point, so it's hard to go backwards and fix that problem. But, yeah, spring's coming and the hail's there. What, and also I was wondering what.
It's got to rain first.
Got to have hail and rain, right?
No, we don't. It can hail and not rain.
Yeah, that's true.
What kind of like size of hail, what level of storm would cause this level of damage? Like what, you know, houses have certain ratings on their roofs.
Houses could have to be there.
I mean, it says they're. That helps.
And within five years old. And the roofs are all within five years of age, correct? Five, six, something like that, max?
Yeah. The last briefing project was right to Junior High. And that's all your biggest groups, about three and a half now, seven and a half years on there.
I was saying.
The auditorium of the high schools, about 10. Because that was, ended up with not one that was held out during the last event.
And it's all, and it's all TPO with insulation in it or just TPO on certain, on flat surface?
No, everything that was done the last time we had the event is all tapered, ISO insulation.
Okay.
To come back up to be code.
Correct.
So we basically got rid of flat roofs and those.
And which helps the hailstone's balance.
Williams was 25 years old. We found to have some issues over there, so that's all about it. We worked to get this all to take place. Move it out.
So what do y'all think about?
And in saying that, the last three rooms we did, right at 700, for those screen rooms, the insurance would have been. So you'd write double that now.
I mean, insurance, it pays to have the insurance, obviously, if you need it, but that deductible is daunting.
Yeah, I think our deductible then was $7,000 per event. We maybe hit us for two weeks the last time.
Because we ended up, it's almost a million and a half. We ended up being a duck.
We'll get new quotes in probably about July. I'm sure we'll see, we paid them about 306 to insure all the buildings, our IT insurance, a couple other small things, our buses, it was about the 306 and that went up 40,000 to 60,000 front just from last year.
It'll be another 15% this year.
It's about 15% every year.
So we'll see that and then I, I mean, I'll get new quotes, but.
But that deductible's not looking to be nicer. They're not going to be like, just kidding.
Yeah, I wouldn't. That's all I have.
Okay. Into happier news.
Sorry.
Better news. Consent agenda items. Exciting things like minutes.
Look, look.
Also to approve the minutes in the last two meetings.
Second. Movement seconded to approve the minutes from the last two meetings on March the 6th and on March the 21st. Is there any additional discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. Budget amendments.
Okay, the first one, I just need to account for the additional supply chain funding that Cafeteria's received. That's one. It's a separate fund, so I have to do it separately from this other one for 199. We received our rollover funds for all the SA funds and then also the football lights. I need to do a formal budget amendment to pay those. We're not hitting fund balance with either of these, FYI.
I'm going to approve the budget amendment number one. We could do both together?
Yes. Yeah, go say budget number one. On the top.
They do both say one.
I'm motion to approve budget amendment number one.
Hit a movement seconded to approve the budget amendments as presented. Any additional discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. Discussion or action items. First item, consideration of possible action on approving the academic stipend list for the 2023-24 school year.
Did we just do that?
We needed to visit.
We talked about it.
The ones that are highlighted again.
So the highlighted ones, the ones that's changed since the last time we saw it?
Yep. And I would say on that academic extra stipend, the cheerleading sponsor, we put that price on there and they're wanting to have the head and the assistant. I think we split that stipend.
That's one, three changes, isn't it, from last year?
Yep.
Say your recommendation, James.
Yeah.
Any discussion, questions, motion?
I'm going to approve Jim's recommendation.
Second.
Move the seconded to approve the administration's recommendation on academic extra duty stipends as presented. Any additional discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. Next item, consideration of possible action to approve certain staff and or board members. Do we have any to approve?
Uh, hiring, right?
No, no, no.
No, no, no.
Fire.
On firearms policy, CKC, we didn't have any on the list. We just had that on there, so.
Yeah.
Bypass that one. Next item, consideration of possible action, recommendation of term.
There we go.
Dual terms and part-time contracts for teachers, counselors, librarians and nurses.
Yeah, I recommend that the board approve renewing the list of term, dual term and part-time contracts for the 22-24 school year.
So I'm going to second.
Move the second. Move the seconded to renew the list of term, dual term, part-time contracts for the upcoming school year. Any additional discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Consideration of possible action on probationary, dual probationary, and non-certified teacher contracts.
I recommend that the board approve renewing the list of probationary, dual probationary, and non-certified teacher contracts for the 23-24 school year.
Motion.
Second.
Move the seconded to approve the, renewing the list of probationary, dual probationary, non-certified teacher contracts for the 23-24 school year. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Next item, consideration of possible action on contracts for SSA.
I recommend that the board approve renewing the list of SSA contracts for the 2023-24 school year.
Motion. Do you have your second? So move the seconded to approve the list of SSA contracts as presented for the 23-24 school year. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion fails three to four. Discussion of possible action on TEAC certification for the 23-24 form, which I believe we have that was the big form that starts on page 287.
So move.
Second.
Move the seconded to approve the form as presented for the TEAC certification for the upcoming school year. Any additional discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Consideration of possible action on hiring personnel for the 23-24 school year.
I recommend that we hire below personnel on a one-year certified teacher's contract, Casey Swak as the new GT teacher.
Motion.
Second.
So move the seconded to hire Casey Swak as the new GT teacher on a one-year certified teacher contract. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Next item, discussion of possible action on approving amendments to the District of Innovation.
Motion.
So move the seconded to approve the amendments to the District of Innovation that we talked about earlier with the highlighted areas, starting on page 310. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Discussion of possible action on approving the certification of unopposed candidates.
Well, I recommend that we move to approve the certification of unopposed candidate as presented and declare unopposed candidate Bryce Hale as elected.
Motion.
I don't know.
Me either.
It has been moved and seconded.
Does Bryce get the vote?
To approve the certification of unopposed candidates and declare Mr. Hale as elected. Any additional discussion?
Last chance.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries 6-0-1.
And you're stuck.
Thanks.
Here, don't put your name on it.
Four more years, four more years, four more years. Discussion of possible action on approving the order of cancellation of the special election with the purpose of electing one at-large school board trustee for the remainder, remaining year of a three-year term. Since we've already declared a candidate as winning this election, we don't need it anymore. Is there a motion?
Motion.
And a second? Move the seconded to cancel the, the special election for the one-year term?
I need to see him step out.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries 6-0-1. Item number nine, date for next month's regular board meeting.
Is that good?
Two, April. What's the 25th look like to everybody?
As good as anything else.
Clear.
Okay, everybody's cool with 4/25?
Yeah.
Oh, if the packet's not this big.
4/25 at 6:00 PM at this spot in Curriton, Texas.
And Wes, everybody has a piece of paper on their desk dealing with the workshops, upcoming board training stuff.
I'll let you guess.
If you, if you want to do any of those, please contact Liliana, let her know so we can make the arrangements for you.
One of them is next week.
April 6th for the, yeah, the Panhandle Area Association of School Boards, they usually put on a really pretty good show. They've got, I've always enjoyed going to their meetings. They'll have, you know, something from a, from a learning standpoint to get credit for, but they also will bring in some group of kids, something that they, some group is doing somewhere within Region 16, and it's always been really, really interesting to see what's, what some others are doing. And then, of course, the spring workshop on the 17th at WT. You'll actually get to choose where you're going, cause Simon said it just happened to get the new member one.
I'm going to Florida instead.
So you won't get to, we get one of Region 14 or something.
Sorry.
But it is, I mean, if you have the ability to go, there's a lot of good information to be able to, to do our jobs better. Some stuff, I mean, I'll be first to admit, there's some stuff you listen to and you, you say, gosh, maybe, maybe not, but it's always best to hear everything that everybody's talking about and make your own decisions on it, so. With that.
Show hands who wants to go next week. Can you do it?
On the 6th, I'll go.
Uh, remotely?
You can. But you don't, but you don't get to eat the chicken fried steak with the queso on it.
You don't go with Wes? You can go it online.
I can, I can eat the chicken fried steak on that.
I don't think it's gonna fit through the line.
Oh, come on. You wanna do it remotely?
I can do it remotely.
Yeah, yeah. Do you get, we get credit for that?
Yes.
Do it remotely up here.
I have all my hours.
And may remotely.
More better.
For what?
Because remember, once, once, once a year, Liliana's gotta read her hours.
I know, I just have to finish two more one-hour courses, then I'm done for this year, so should I save my time to schedule later? Yeah.
You wanna do it remotely as well?
Yeah, yeah. Want the broken one?
What's the 6th? The 6th Tuesday night?
It's Thursday.
Thursday.
Sure, I miss my chicken fried queso.
That's pretty good. That is a case.
It is pretty good.
It was good.
White gravy and queso on the chicken fried. It's awesome, the kids would love it too. Be a mess.
Anybody wanna sign up for the?
Spring workshop?
Yes.
Spring workshop?
Yes.
And I probably should too.
It was good. Everybody wants to go to dance, except for Sarah.
How much is it? Twenty, fifty bucks?
Sixty, sixty.
Sixty, sixty. Why don't you just sign everybody up, Sarah?
I do bill for all of us. Okay, thank you, everybody. We are adjourned.
Wow, I missed it, I said nine.